Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the August, so we're back in City Schools Board Meeting. Welcome back to a new school year, hope everyone's doing well and adjusting. I'm sure all your students are just thrilled. They are for Little Father, those are all still, you know, new, so they've got new things to wear. Anyway, welcome everybody. I'd like to ask if you would please rise, Mr. Alexander is going to lead us in a moment of silence.
I would like to ask you as we pause for a moment of silence to thank Ms. Cheryl Pitts, who recently had surgery, and Mr. Willie Church, who is seriously ill in Johnson City Medical Center. Please pause. Thank you. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have, would have recognized Ms. Patty Semerly, she has a virus and will come in September. We have her plaque ready to go, and Mr. Trent was going to make the pictures of the whole family, but we'll have to do that in September. She called in sick.
If you've noticed, some of us are sporting new shirts for our Race for Wondell. I'd like to thank Kelly Gagley and Sharif for putting a rush order on the shirts. Dr. Wondell, you make a nice looking shirt, so, yeah. Anyway, the reason we did that this month is because the race is going to be the Saturday before our next meeting, and I would encourage everyone to go to the chamber, go online, register for the race. Anyone watching us later, or at home, please register. I hope to see everybody out. I will be one of the walking people, or I will, you know, give you water or whatever, but I'm looking forward to this. I have a lot of people really excited about this, and just encourage everyone to be a part of that. It is now time for citizens to speak, in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, time to move on to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. You have any questions or comments?
I just have one comment, under, under a minute, it's under the regular agenda. When we did the motions and the roll call for Mr. Alexander's contract, it says Dr. May amended his original motion to extend the contract with Superintendent Alexander, when actually, I made the motion to extend the contract to you, and Dr. May seconded.
Thank you very much. It's funny, we can read it, and I missed it too, so thank you for noticing that.
Well, I was looking, we talked about amending the prior motion, and we have done it this way, so I just want to make sure that we get it in our records correctly.
Good catch.
I have a question about item eight, under consent agenda, and it may be answered in an item that was added to the agenda tonight. In the year-end reserves, I noticed the early learning center had quite an increase there. Did they add another early, who is, is that Mr. Pliss?
It's Mr. Pliss.
Okay. Do they add another class in early learning?
No, we did not. Fundraisers. It just was fundraisers, would have been the increase.
What did they got, four?
Four classes, yes ma'am. It's not, that's been the same, I think, for years.
Okay, and then, under the projects at the ball field at TA Dugger, I noticed in another item, they had it, it was the, the school system paid 373.9, and then, of course, they're asking for the other monies in tonight's budget, but I suppose that's what we paid then, plus the 114.8, where they've total added it and deducted it. I had a hard time keeping up with TA Dugger.
Are you still on attachment eight?
Yeah.
Okay. And again, I'm not sure Mrs. Wilson understands what your question was, would you mind?
Are you on year-end reserve?
I'm on attachment eight, yes.
Yep, that's it.
Do you mind asking it again, for Ms. Wilson?
I hope they've been able to work out there. It looks like a swim.
A lot of rain.
You want me to ask?
She wants to answer, but I don't think she knows what you're asking.
Is it still 373, plus tonight's increase for the TA Dugger Ball Field?
No ma'am. Part of the project was not completed at the end of the year, so those funds were reserved at the end of the year and carried over into 1314 to finish paying for the project.
Okay. And the total reserves ending, just to get an ending, 1,637,000? What's the total reserve according to this, number eight?
The total reserves that are in the unassigned fund balance is the 1,637,000.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, for anyone? All right. I'm on floor, is to approve the consent and regular agenda with the corrections for the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. This is Alexander. We've had a good couple of weeks.
The sun has come out. Oh, it stays out. Anyway, of course, as y'all know, and spend in the papers, and on the news, our school system has received the exemplary school status. That's more out of five, of the five, of 136, and that's to be attributed, of course, to our teachers and teacher assistants, and those supervisors in this room who've worked with remediation and tutoring, and to say that, very least, that testing's not the only thing that, that we're focusing on, there folks, testing and data. Extracurricularly, our school has done, our school system has done much, and as we know, teaching is more than just testing, and so, but our people have done a tremendous job, and our children have come a long way, and that's what's most important. We will be having a celebration and recognition of teachers at one of our home ball games, and a dinner will be invited for each school separately, our next professional development day in October. The secret to any organization, we believe, of being effective is its people, and I think we have the absolute best, and this proves it. I will say, of course, our capital project funds coming through for the council, shows that the community and the council has faith in what we're trying to do. I hope that's what it shows. We had a great in-service program, I hope that the people who saw the musically talented were appreciative of their talents, because it's amazing. In the back of, in your folders, there were, among other things, there were two letters of thanks, one to Ms. Owen, with her update on the law, when she came from, all the way from Memphis, and Captain Joy Marklin, who helped us with an investigation and did a tremendous job there, and it's great to know that we have such confident people on whom we can rely, purely local, too. Okay, next, our personnel update, folks, I'm sorry that this is rather long, but I'll hustle through that, if it's okay with y'all. First, the new hires, G. Thomas Hoffman, the second, EHS Assistant Principal, effective 722, Donnie Shipley, EHS Assistant Wrestling Coach, effective 724, Lester Perkins, Systemwide Maintenance Worker, effective 81, Summer Ward, Eastside Teacher, effective 85, Ryan Whitten, TA Dugger Junior High Assistant Football Coach, effective 85, Logan Baker, TA Dugger Junior High Assistant Football Coach, effective 85, Chelsea Harold, TA Dugger Junior High Part-Time Math Teacher, effective 85, Brandy McLeod, TA Dugger Junior High Part-Time Math Coach, effective 85, Catherine Hartman, Herr McQuonick Math Coach, effective 85, Annette Harris, Herr McQuonick Special Education Teacher, effective 85, Ryan Presnel, EHS Assistant Football Coach, effective 85, Jared Whitehead, EHS Assistant Football Coach, effective 85, John White, Lifeguard in the Community Involvement Program, effective 85, Logan Baker, EHS Assistant Wrestling Coach, effective 87, Brenda Byrum, byroom, excuse me, EHS Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 88, Kristy Katt, Herr McQuonick Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 88, Brittany May, Herr McQuonick Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 88, Megan Gwynn, Eastside Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, take a breath, thank you, effective 88, resignation, Janie Bowers, EHS Part-Time Cook, effective 715, Judy Wilson, Herr McQuonick Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 722, James Cole, EHS Teacher, effective 726, Rachel Severance, Eastside Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 730, Michelle Johnson, Herr McQuonick Assistant to the Teacher, effective 730, Dalton Walts, Lifeguard in the Community Involvement Program, effective 82, Anthony Hubert, Lifeguard in the Community Involvement Program, effective 82, Jane Wasson, TA Dugger Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 86, Megan Gwynn, ESP Childcare Worker, effective 85, Kenneth W. Joiner, Part-Time Bus Driver, effective 816, and if you'll turn your pages, several pages there, you'll see that there has been a resignation or extension by Kenneth Joiner, Systemwide Bus Driver, effective 89. There's transfers, Josh Boatman, from EHS Teacher to EHS Assistant to the Principal, effective 729, Rosa Bartra, from TA Dugger Teacher to EHS Teacher, effective 85, Jeff Nye, from EHS Head Wrestling Coach to TA Dugger Head Wrestling Coach, effective 86, Donnie Shipley, EHS Assistant Wrestling Coach to EHS Head Wrestling Coach, effective 86, Noel Jenkins, from Westside Teacher Assistant to TA Dugger Teacher Assistant, effective 87, Marietta Emmons, from Westside Teacher Assistant to TA Dugger Teacher Assistant, effective 87, Brittany Byrd, from Herr McQuonick Part-Time Assistant to Teacher, Assistant to the Teacher to Herr McQuonick Interim Teacher, effective 923, Ashley Bailey, ESP Substitute Childcare Worker to Regular ESP Childcare Worker, effective 812, leave of absence, Cheryl Pitts, Westside Guidance Counselor, from 85 to 830, Jessica Green, EHS Assistant to the Teacher, from 87 to 1218, Amy Cole, Herr McQuonick Teacher, from 912-13 to 11813, Natalie Woodward, Herr McQuonick Teacher, from 923-13 to 111, Eric Womper, TA Dugger Assistant Principal, from 924 to 1225. Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have any reports from anyone? All right. First item on our regular agenda is to approve the waiving of the 30-day resignation notice requirement per Board Policy 5.204 and TCA 49-5-508 for the following individual, James Cole. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion?
That was requested by Mr. Cole, and I request that you consider it and approve it.
Okay. Anything else? Item on the floor is to approve the waiving of the 30-day resignation notice requirement per Board Policy 5.204 and TCA 49-5-508 for the following individual, James Cole. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, ratify approval of change order number 003 to the new athletic playing fields for TA Dugger Junior High School project in the amount of $11,200. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Haas?
The, the reason for this request was, we got in touch with General Shell, who of course is a brick manufacturer here in the area, and in talking about some of our projects, they were willing to donate all the block required to build the dugouts and a scorer's tower concession stand restroom at the fields at TA Dugger. Obviously, that's a significant donation on their part, and part of that, trying to keep the cost down, was we were trying to use state inmate labor to construct those. Well, as you know, we had a certain window to do that in the summer, and unfortunately, you know, it's been an extremely wet summer, so that became very difficult. We had a small window to try to do that in, as well as, before we could build those, we had to have concrete slabs poured to put the block on. So that's basically what this request was, was to pour the foundation, the concrete slabs, to erect those, those structures, and, you know, yes, $11,000 is a lot of money, but when you look at what we're getting for that, and the fact that they've donated that block, not only have they donated block, but they're also going to donate some brick architectural, architecture work. It's really hard to explain, and you'll, you'll see it soon, but it's basically a brick type sculpture, sculpture that they're going to put on the side, so should be really, really, it's going to be extremely nice, so we're excited about that opportunity. Again, we were in such a tight window, that's why we're asking to ratify it, you know, we tried to get those slabs poured, and the inmates were able to construct one of those dugouts, and we've actually have someone in the community that's going to bring a crew, an actual brick mason's going to bring a crew, this Saturday and the next Saturday, to come in and try to lay more of the block, so as you can see, we're trying to do everything we can to keep the cost down on that, but yet have a, have a completed facility once we're finished.
Did they ever, did they ever take care of that water that was standing in the field? Did they put in some more drainage, or how did that go?
I mean, the, what's there is there, they just sloped the field, you know, unfortunately, I don't know that there's a whole lot that could be done after the amounts of rain that we've had, I'm not really sure. As a matter of fact, someone showed me a picture the other day of the field in Johnson City, the football field where the turf was floating in the water because of, because of that rain. I just think this is an unusual year, we've had so much rain, so I wouldn't anticipate, you know, that really being an issue, you know, in the future.
I know, when they built the media center, you know, they had to go in and replace, what they did in the place, they put in pipe to drain, you can look at the pipe where it drains out onto East Street.
Right. There is, there is drainage in the field, so there, there is, you know, connections for all that with sewer and things like that, so.
Did we not cut out the underfield drainage, though?
We did, we did.
Does it all drain toward East Street, or does some of it drain toward Holly Lane?
I think it, it all slopes toward, the grade slopes toward East Street, is the intention of the field. That's the way it was sloped. When we had to take the infield drainage out, we had to find another way to drain the field, and again, they just put a slope toward the outfield, is what they do. And then there's some drains in between the two fields, the softball field and the baseball field, there's some drains there to collect the water from those areas.
And there aren't any lights at this point, right?
No, ma'am. We certainly would love to have that in the future, so.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Yes.
This $11,000, is it for these concrete slabs?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
That was by there today, it's starting to shape up, they've had a terribly wet construction time this summer. I guess my question is, when do they have an estimated time to complete this?
I talked to Mr. Williams today, and he said they felt like that they could be out of their, their part by Friday of next week, again, depending on the weather, and then at that point, the only thing that's left is finishing the fencing, and then these, these dugouts, and for the most part, you know, we finished that part, we also have to put up the scoreboards, but we were waiting until these parts were finished to do that. So we already have that all lined up to do, we already have the scoreboards, just a matter of installation.
Now, where are their scoreboards going? I'm looking at CA1.
Okay. I don't have that in front of me, but if you're standing facing East Street, and the baseball field is on your left, yeah, on the left, and the softball field is on the right, the softball field will be in right field, so close to the new parking lot.
Okay.
The baseball field will be exactly opposite, it will be, as you turn into the parking lot off High School Street, it'll be in the left field line of the baseball field, so they're at opposite ends.
Okay, okay.
And that one structure, they're going to have restrooms, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I saw they were all planted.
So that way, we'll be able to keep them out of the, the building.
Is their season only in the spring, the softball and the baseball?
Yes, ma'am.
Do they not have any practice in the fall?
No, they don't. What we would utilize the outfield for is for football, soccer, things like that in the fall. But we're excited, and I know Mr. Little's excited as well.
Like, this $11,000, this should be the, the final number, you don't anticipate any other expenses that may be incurred that we would have to?
No, I mean, you know, there's, there's some little things that we're going to try to do ourselves, put the roofs on, you know, the structures and things like that, but we'll try to, we'll try to do that, you know, in-house with people that we have, or hopefully maybe someone will be willing to donate, you know, as well. But this was, this is going to be a significant improvement to that facility, and, you know, for, again, for the cost and what they've donated, and we would like to maybe have a recognition for them, as well as the, the brick mason that's coming in to work these two days, we'd like to recognize them in a board meeting, you know, in the future, so.
You know, of course, I'm going to vote for it, I love the idea of those fields, but when it said ratify, I thought, how do you ratify money like that?
I guess you could tell us we can't use that, and we have to find somewhere else to, to, to come up with that, and then we'd come back and ask you to ratify it again, I guess. I, I don't know, we've ratified things in the past, I don't know, that's a good question.
I mean, would that, now, I'm voting for it, it's just for my own curiosity, I was asking this question.
Sure.
And I did call Nashville and talk to one of the attorneys, but I thought if you ratified it, it'd already been done, so they've already spent the $11,200.
And I, I think, again, we were in a tight spot, where you only have a board meeting once a month, sometimes things like that occur, that are we going to say, well, no, we just, we, we can't take a significant, you know, maybe a 25, 30, $40,000 donation for a $10,000 or $11,000 investment.
Ms. Van Haas explained how they, we were called and, and told that they had to pour those on the weekend, and things of that nature, in, in order to get that work done.
And again, they were.
Ms. Van Haas hustled to get that done, as it were.
They were working through the rains, and, again, we had the state inmates for a two-week period there at TA Dugger, and so they had to have the pads obviously poured before they could come in and do that, so if we hadn't had that, we would have lost the labor that we had in the one dugout that we have. So, I understand, and that's obviously not the way we operate, normal, but I think we all felt like we were acting in the system's best interest for that investment and what we'd be getting from it.
Well, I was just going by the state law, you know, and I thought, I saw a conflict there. And then I was going to vote for it.
Let me clarify with Ms. Wilson, I don't believe that a check has actually been cut to pay for that.
It has not.
Is that correct?
It has not.
So the monies have not been?
Has not been.
Have been, have not been sent to pay for this. What we have done is that we have authorized them to go ahead, and asking the board now to ratify our decision to have to go ahead on it, and then all, that, by you doing that, we will be able to release the funds and pay them for it. But the money has not been paid, no ma'am.
Obviously, the services have been rendered, but there's not been payment, that's correct.
Just an interesting, little different thing there, and that's what I wondered about.
As Mr. Van Haas said, Ms. Armstrong, you're well aware, you know, from your many years of tenure, that's just one of many, many things that we've had to ratify because of an emergency situation through the years.
Yeah. Excuse me, I know earlier, one or two times, they have given us a phone call, and we just called back and said, yes, and, you know, at least you had some feedback before, but I do appreciate that, and I am thankful for the donation, but, you know, maybe we could just simply, even though if we're not there, leave it on the answering machine, where we can contact Ms. Perkins, or either Mr. Alexander, and say, yes, it's okay, we understand. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Item on the floor is to ratify approval of change order number 003 to the new athletic playing fields for TA Dugger Junior High School project in the amount of $11,200. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, approve issuance of emergency purchase order for boiler replacement at TA Dugger Junior High School. Current estimated replacement cost is $176,889, which will be addressed through the energy savings contract currently in place with Train. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Trent is going to come forward to discuss this. Folks, we're really pushing the time element here because of the two boilers, one of which is down, and the other is ineffective, and it's costing a ton. But go ahead, Mr. Trent, and fill us, fill us in, if you will, please.
Yeah, this is replace both our heating boilers at TA Dugger. We currently, we have two boilers, one boiler has capacity to heat the entire school, one is out of service, and state inspectors came in towards the last of the, probably early spring, late winter, and there's a problem with the heat exchanger on it. Basically, it's unreparable, so we will have to replace that boiler if we would try to go with the existing system we have now. Well, the existing system we have now in the school is really out of date, very inefficient. We are generating steam, and then converting it back to hot water to heat the school, so looking at the cost of what it would cost to, and we don't have the hard numbers together, what it would cost to replace what we have right now, but it would be without a doubt throwing money, just, just throwing it away. What we need to do is approve this order here, which will give us new hot water boilers for TA Dugger with the ability to add on as we build the new addition. They are, best way to describe them, they're almost units about like that water cooler right there that are modular, and as we add on TA Dugger, we'll be able to add these on and keep building off of there, about 90% efficient. They're, and I'd also like to say, we would have to do this, we've got to address our heating issues and cooling both when we do the addition at TA Dugger, and so basically, we're just going ahead and moving forward with ripping the old inefficient things out, one that's not operable right now, and putting this in. If we don't approve this, one thing we'd be facing, we would be trying to run on one boiler at TA Dugger, which does have a problem right now. There's no guarantee how long it will last, and if it does fail on us, we have, we, there's no possible way we could heat that school, there's, I mean, there's no backup plan, there's nothing we could rig up to do it, and talking to Train, I talked to him about 5:00 today just to get the lead time on these boilers, and once we issue the PO with them, it'll take about four weeks for them to get in, to get the product on site, to start the demo, and start moving on this.
And it was cool this morning, was it not? We can imagine what it'll be in a month's time.
Yeah, and if we, if we wait, you know, another month on this, I, I just don't think we can beat the cold weather, we've got to come up with some plan, you know, before the cold hits.
It's my understanding, Mr. Trent, I'm asking, is when you're down on one boiler, it's the equivalent of being on emergency heat, and so our cost to wait is also higher to heat that school?
Well, the setup we have now, not necessarily. Now, the boiler we have right now, there's something wrong with the, the air gas mixture, we don't know that, which is essentially wasting a lot of natural gas, but these are set up, the way it's set up now, and the way it will be set up, is it's redundant, so if one will kick on, you know, or it doesn't kick on, the other one will kick on, take the place of it, but we can essentially run on one boiler, and the, the new system will be. we'd be facing, we would be trying to run on one boiler at T A Duggar, which does have a problem right now. Um, there's no guarantee how long it will last, and if it does fail on us, we have, we, there's no possible way we could heat that school. There's, uh, I mean, there's no backup plan, there's nothing we could rig up to do it. And, uh, talking to Train, I talked to him about five o'clock today just to get the lead time on these boilers, and, uh, once we issue the P O with them, it'll take about four weeks for them to get in, to get the product on site, uh, to start the demo and start moving on this.
And it was cool this morning, was it not? We can imagine what it'll be in a month's time.
Yeah, and if we, if we wait, you know, another month on this, I, I just don't think we can beat the cold weather. We've gotta come up with some plan, you know, before the cold hits.
It's my understanding, Mr. Trenton, I'm asking, is, uh, when you're down on one boiler, it's the equivalent of being on emergency heat, and so our cost to wait is also higher to heat that school?
Well, the setup we have now, uh, not necessarily. Uh, the, now, the boiler we have right now, uh, there's something wrong with the, the, the air gas mixture. We don't know that, which is essentially wasting a lot of natural gas, but, uh, these are set up, the way it's set up now and the way it will be set up is, it's redundant, so if one will kick on, you know, or it doesn't kick on, the other one will kick on, take the place of it, but we can essentially run on one boiler, and the, the new system will be that same way. And, uh, you know, when we, uh, address the air issues at T A Duggar, when we do an addition down there, we will do the same thing. We'll try to build some redundancy into the air as well, so. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Item on the floor is to approve issuance of emergency purchase order for the boiler replacement at T A Duggar Junior High School. Current estimated replacement cost is one hundred seventy-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which will be addressed through the energy savings contract currently in place with Train. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is, uh, approve revised kindergarten student report card beginning the two thousand fourteen dash two thousand thirteen year. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I see.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like Dr. Wondell, who's worked, uh, more closely on this one than anyone else, so we'll give him an opportunity to sound off here.
Um, we came a long way even since my first year as principal at Eastside. There was a time where kindergarten had a rest time. Uh, it's almost a joke now to even think of that as a rest time. So our grade card is quite antiquated, uh, probably several years ago, so this is just an attempt to give parents a real picture of the expectations of their students and what their students are actually doing as opposed to a card that had been around twenty, thirty, forty years. This is more in line with what is required from the teachers and what's required from the students. So this is basically just something that benefits the parents to give them a picture of what, you know, this is their first year in school, so we need to try to be as honest and open with parents as we can. And as you can see, it's very lengthy and very detailed, and that's what we wanted to do.
The, the first two pages were, were fine, and as I say, I went over it because I was thinking, I said, they're just starting, so we don't wanna hurt them. Scare. But the last page had Eastside Elementary and student name. It didn't have grade and homeroom and previous credits. Uh, I assumed that, that would not go out with the first grader, that that's prob-, I mean, with, uh, kindergarten, it's probably your upper grades.
That's a great part for grades two, three, five.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Have you ever seen the book, All I Ever Needed to Know, I Learned in Kindergarten? It's true, isn't it? If you haven't read that little book, you really need to read it. Humorous.
Any other questions? Item on the floor is to approve revised kindergarten student report card beginning the two thousand fourteen dash two thousand thirteen year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next is approve agreement between the Elizabethan City School System and the Elizabethan Police Department for the School Resource Officer Pro-, Office Program. This agreement will be reviewed annually and will begin on the date on which approval is obtained from the Elizabethan City Police Department dash Elizabethan City Council. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'm gonna approve.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong?
Again, with, there has not been a written agreement up until this point, even though we have had SROs, uh, in our, in our school system, and this is long overdue, and, uh, working with the chief, uh, has been a pleasure, and previous chiefs as well. But, uh, what this will allow is strictly, uh, define what the role of the officers in those locations, uh, what the role is, so that both of them can, they can be mutually exclusive yet support one another. And what I'm saying there, an example being that a police officer will not do the investigation of, you know, of any endeavor that's, uh, involved, a problem that we have in the school system, that they will be close by to handle those. Plus, of course, if there's a situation involving violence, serious violence and things of that nature, they will be able to step forward and actually, uh, be, begin to control the circumstance, and they do take over at that point. But our people are always working closely with them, they're radioed together, and what this will do is to find each person's role in that situation. And it, it'll also, I think our administrators will appreciate knowing exactly, uh, enrolling what, uh, one is capable of doing, and I appreciate your consideration of this.
Now, we have two of these officers, if I correct, one at the high school and one at the junior high.
One junior high, yes. And we paid for one, and Mrs. Wilson pays for one, and, and of course, City pays, uh, which we're, we're very appreciative.
Of those two, does that include the one that randomly stops by?
No, that's, those are, um, uh, regular duty police.
I had the, um, honor and privilege of speaking for one of the classes last week at the high school for Mr. Campbell's class, and I witnessed the procedure, uh, where they came through and walked through. It was very effective and, uh, very professional. And, you know, my hats off to the police department for doing that. I think that's a really good thing that they're doing, and it, um, it was random times. It was, it was during, about between bell changes, they walked in and walked through, and I happened to be coming back out of that, so I, I was able to see it at working. And it wasn't our SRO. His car was out front. He wasn't, he came through, and as I was leaving, he left back out. So I'm, I think they're doing a great job with that.
And the officers also, as I saw, uh, Mrs. Vitale the other day standing with the policeman out there, uh, and of course, there isn't a SRO over there, but they, they pull in even close to the side and walk through, go into the buildings, uh, go through at lunchtime. And that's big for, that's huge for, uh, smaller children, uh, for smaller children.
When we met with Chief Workman in one of the meetings that we had a roundtable discussion, um, I hadn't thought of this, but, uh, the comment was made that it would help with the perception of the police officers as well. And I think, when I grew up, I always wanted to be one, and sometimes, somewhere along the way, it seems as if, you know, um, our kids haven't always had the same experience, but we're giving them the opportunity now to see a police officer in a good light, and they can grow up watching that as something of respect. So I think it's twofold. I'm very pleased with that, and I'm thankful that they got a written agreement to do that.
I'm very impressed with them. I was, uh, picking up, uh, I was at, uh, the high school one day picking up one of my dau-, my daughter, and, uh, some girls out front kinda doing what the girls will do after school, and it was a matter of minutes before the SRO pulled up, got involved, took care of it, and I was very impressed. I mean, it happened quickly, and, uh, somebody alerted him, and he was right there, and never escalated, uh, so, uh, they're doing a fantastic job.
Well, I, I did read this contract quite thoroughly, and item number H, um, caught my eye, and, of course, it said legal requirements regarding all such inter- interrogations shall be followed. And I'm sure if it's something serious, very serious, that the branch would be contacted as well. So I, I, I am pleased that the school system and police would both have a say-so before anything would be written or, or done. And item M was another, return to next page, um, the fact that the principal is able to call the SRO and, and do that, and to specify their duties very clearly, and I, I think that's good on their part as well as ours, as to what they can be asked to, to do.
Any other questions or comments? Item on the floor is to approve, approve agreement between the Elizabethan City School System and Elizabethan Police Department for the School Resource Office Program. This agreement will be reviewed annually and will begin on the date on which approval is obtained from the Elizabethan City Police Department slash Elizabethan City Council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is approve clinical affiliation agreement between Tennessee Technology Center at Elizabethan and Elizabethan City Schools beginning July one, two thousand thirteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Charles Zander?
Uh, as we move back to the clinical circumstance, uh, for our students working with Tennessee Technology Center, and even though we didn't have any of these last year, this is set up, and, and what this also complements the addition of Ms. Gina Johnson, uh, as a health occupation, patient teacher in that area. So Mrs. Harden and Ms., uh, Ms. Johnson are in that area, and as a result of that, they will be needing this. At least Ms. Fletcher, police, will be in registration. So with that in mind, uh, I heartily ask you, uh, to, and working with Tennessee Technology Center has been, uh, certainly a benefit to us, and as Mr. Aklas knows right here, this building alone, and this room, is a sign of one aspect of that, even though it was not of a health occupation nature. So I, I ask you to please, uh, consider and, and vote for this.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Item on the floor is to approve clinical affiliation agreement between the Tennessee Technology Center at Elizabethan and Elizabethan City Schools beginning July one, two thousand thirteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item, approve policy revision schedule for the annual board agenda. Uh, can I get a, uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, I'll put this on there. Um, Mr. Isaacs and Dr. May and myself attended the policy workshop in Greenville, and this was something that they suggested we do as a way to kind of keep up with our policy, um, annual. So I just took the form that they suggested, and basically, every month, we will have, uh, a division part of our policy book to look over, look through it. If you want to talk about any of the policies, if you, uh, feel like we need to make some changes, this will be some general housekeeping. Uh, all I ask that, that you let either myself or Ms. Perkins know, so that we can have that in the board packet, and we all have time to be prepared to discuss it. So we'll just take each section, one month at a time. It'll get us through the, the year, and, uh, we will have reviewed our policy book for the entire year. This little housekeeping, something we've really, we talked about doing it. I don't think we've ever actually done this, not since I've been on the board, so, um, we were just listening to what they were recommending at our workshop.
Uh, quick question.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, interruption. In September, are we gonna meet and, and review this as a group, or how are we?
I think, uh, what I would suggest, let's try it, just be part of our meeting. Uh, if, if, when you, as things start coming in, if it looks lengthy, then we may suggest that we have a workshop. If it's just one or two items that need a little tweaking, then we'll just make that part of the meeting. So we'll probably just play it by ear. If there's, if there's one that we realize, boy, this needs a lot of work, then I would suggest we have a policy workshop. But otherwise, we'll, we'll, we'll attempt it, you know, we can change it as we go.
I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, that is listed under one of the duties of the board.
Yep, it is.
You must review your policies. And I don't know that we ever have covered all those policies in one year.
We'll attempt it.
And I think we're supposed to do it every year, annually.
Annually.
I've actually started doing this at work since that policy workshop, and it's been met with a great deal of success in that, uh, policies are made, but because it's so lengthy and wordy and things change, you know, new laws are, are brought up, or new things, and I think we learned that with, uh, five point four oh four about, you know, the, the timing for which we have to notify our teachers. Those things happen, and we weren't able to change them. So had we been doing this annually and on a rotating basis, we would've caught that and made that change so that we didn't have to rescind or anything. Just makes it a, uh, a great familiarity with it as well, so. But I think what I would ask us to, is that, those are broad topics. If you'll tell us, is this like section five, like in an email, or Clara, if you can notify us which ones it encompasses in that section called school operations. I think it actually corresponds to a full section of one point zero to two point oh.
It would be helpful, uh, to, um, Ms. Boer and Mr. Alexander, especially in, uh, Mr. Van has played a big part in revising these, uh, so that we present them back to you the way that you want any wording changed. So it would be helpful if all the board members, if they're gonna look at this first section for next month, if you could look at it and not wait till the actual last minute to give it to us. It would be helpful, 'cause that way it will give our administrative team a little bit more time to review it as well. And if it's something that we have a question about, obviously, we do check with, um, the attorneys, uh, both at T S B A and the attorneys that we retain, and it's, you know, sending it to them with our suggestions, and then them sending it back to us. It's not always accomplished in the same day. So as much lead time as you can give us would be appreciated.
And on the, on a side, on this same, uh, policy workshop, they mentioned having the online policy manual as being a, a very big benefit. I had the big notebook for a while, and, um, if you don't, if you have those laying around and you don't update them, those can be utilized to say, well, you know, this, which is your, which are you following, the old one or the new one? So they actually recommended that we do away with our written, um, and use our online ones as our official policies. I don't mind to have those, but I don't wanna maintain it for that reason, that I don't wanna be responsible for having one that's not complete and up to date. So that's just a thought that they threw out there at that meeting, and it made a lot of sense that, um, once we make an update, it's on the official source, and there's basically one book that everybody's reading from, because when we make those subtle changes, they don't always make it to everybody's book, and then one's out of sync, so. Just a thought.
That's true, and when we have our new employee orientation, that is what we recommend to those individuals as well, is that they refer to the online policy manual first. We give them specifics as to where the hard copies are located within each of the school sites, but we do encourage them to use the online version first for those exact reasons.
Well, I really like the idea that we're breaking this down, because that is one big notebook, and, uh, it's, it's a little terrifying. I remember the first time I got that, I just, you know, you can use it for weightlifting, whatever you want. It, it serves many purposes, but. Any more questions or comments on this? Item on the floor is to approve policy revision schedule for the annual board agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Next item is approve additional board attorney located in the tri-city area. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second, so we can discuss.
All right. Um, Mrs. Armstrong?
Okay. Uh, yeah, yes, I put, I put that on there because, um, I have a little problem with the attorneys outside of Elizabethan here, but one of the duties of the board is to employ a legal counsel to advise or represent the board, and all, most all of our government bodies do have an attorney at their regular meetings. We have had that, and it makes you feel so comfortable to look out in the audience and see your attorney sitting there that will give you an opinion or an answer that you don't know about. And so that's, that's a good feeling, and I really wish that we had a local attorney so that they could be present at our meetings or our committee meetings and help to give us advice. It saves a lot of time preparing for the board meeting. But the charge, of course, and I don't know what the attorneys here charge per hour. This particular group charges one ninety-five an hour, and I don't think we could afford them coming up here every month for a meeting, because in the contract that is written by the attorney, uh, they will charge for the, the travel. Now, I said, well, as I remember, local attorneys did not charge for travel. There may have been if they came from Greenville, but I don't remember. It's been too many years where they did or not. And I think, too, that the attorneys are all going to use the, um, Tennessee Code Annotated for state law, and one time I called one of our attorneys whose office was in Kingsport to get an opinion, and he said, well, just do what I do. Read the Tennessee Code Annotated, and he said, I'll call T E B S, uh, T E S, T S B A, which is what I usually do, and I think Rita said she usually did, too. And there's no charge. So that's what I continued to do. Um, but actually, the communication is, that's what I have a problem with, uh, is, well, when I was thinking about this particular item, put on the agenda, I really debated with myself whether I was gonna put in there additional. I did. If you don't like it, just tell me, and that's okay. Um, I would have preferred not to have used it, but I did put it in there. It gave us a lot of leeway. And, uh, about, see, I never did agree to hiring a, an attorney in Memphis. And about, see, I never did agree to hiring a, an attorney in Memphis for Elizabethan City Schools. But it made it kind of bad when I found out I could not communicate with these people. I tried it in the beginning, email, phone call. I even passed a message along, I think at the time, Mr. Alexander, you, I believe. And I have that, if you need a copy of that. But it, it didn't really help me that much because I'm a person, you have to tell me something two and three times and talk with me and show me. So the communication is not good. If, if you want to find out something from our attorney, you must go through your superintendent or through the board chairman. And then they go to the attorney, tell them what we want to know, then they bring the answer to us back. Kind of like the middleman. So anyway, I, you know, I, I'm not real happy with that procedure. And in years past, we've had attorneys from Kingsport, Greenville, had some good ones from Kingsport, Bristol, we've had some from Elizabethan. And I noticed that the Carter County Board of Education has their attorney there at every meeting, which is a good idea. And then I looked at the board packet, at the contract, and of course, there's no problem if you wanted to terminate these particular lawyers, but I don't suggest that. Actually, on page one of the contract, it's mentioned under term, and paragraph two, "All legal services shall be coordinated." It's, they are an independent contractor, and you may terminate the services of the firm at any time. I think really it'll be a big plus for our system if we do hire a local attorney, because these are people we've known probably all of our lives, they have children in our schools, they are products from our schools. So I think you, I feel more comfortable with them. And so I want to make a motion that the board creates a position for an attorney from tri-city area for, for provision of legal services. Now, I have not in any way, former fashion, said, let's terminate those in Memphis, but just simply added to Elizabethan and local attorneys. I didn't go any further than that because I had to wait to see how the vote would go.
No, hang on, Ms. Perkins?
Just as a point of order, Ms. Armstrong, we already have one motion on the floor that we haven't voted on regarding that. So we'll need to handle that motion first before you can enter in, you can make a second motion.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, there is.
Can you restate, can you restate the motion for, or there's a motion pending.
And it was as you, as you gave to Mrs. Perkins, which says, approve additional board attorney located in the tri-city area. That's as you asked us to be printed. So that's what, that's the item on the floor currently. That's where we are. So if you like that.
Baker made that motion, and Dr. May seconded it, so.
We have a motion on the floor. We made this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Armstrong suggested what went on the board agenda, but you made the motion to, for this one, and then Dr. May seconded. So now you're in the discussion stage of that motion, but Mrs. Armstrong just restated that she wanted to make a motion, but she can't do that until you vote on the first motion, which you've made.
Well, I was.
Procedurally.
Okay. I was going to make a comment as far as the discussion stage.
You can do that. You're still in the discussion stage. I just didn't want Mrs. Armstrong to think that she could make the motion and that we, we would act on her motion prior to the one that you've already made.
Okay. As far as the discussion, I would like to just have one attorney, which is local, as opposed to paying two attorneys. And to, if we have a question on an issue, we, we'd be able to contact them as opposed to going through our administrative staff or superintendent. And that way, they could clear it up or even give us them writing what we needed. But in a number of cases, usually if there's an issue or whatever, we get a brief review of what was discussed, but you don't get to clear, I don't always have the clear picture. So I don't want to continue to ask exactly what was the question, but it's just a little review of what was asked and what is being paid for. But I like to hear the whole thing. And I'd like to have just one attorney.
Well, historically, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you.
That's okay.
Okay. I know that historically, when we have used a local attorney, we've had attorneys on retainer, which is we pay them a monthly flat fee. And I believe the last time we looked at this, it was between $1,200 a month and $1,500 a month, which would be $14,400 per year, or $18,000 per year that we would be paying attorneys. So that's why we went with Mr. Shields' group in Memphis, because they charge us per hour and they're specialists. It's kind of like if I'm, I'm on the eye doctor, I need to examine, I'm going to the eye doctor. If I have cancer, I'm going to a cancer doctor. The reason we chose Mr. Shields is because he is a school law specialist. When we were at the Summer Law Institute, Mr. Shields came back to speak to me. We just talked for a moment, he had to excuse himself because he was leading the seminar for everyone else's board's attorneys. So our guy was the guy leading the workshop for everybody else's attorney. And I know that, that not everyone's happy with them. All I know is that since he has, they have been our attorneys, they have walked us through a lot of partic, it could have been situations that if, I believe if they had not been our attorneys, probably would not have been handled in the way that they have, and we got through them very, very well because they're experts, they've given us amazing legal counsel. And not in saying, you mentioned using the middleman and that you would like for each person to contact that. Well, when you charge, when an attorney charges per hour, if we had five people contact the attorney to ask the same thing over and over again, we're wasting a lot of money. Right now, currently, we have several ways that we get information. Mrs. Armstrong was right, we do use TSBA. We have three fantastic attorneys that give us just general information. For most of the time, I feel like they take care of everything for her, for us. A lot of times, when we get our board packet, if it's policy information, most everything in the back, they, there's these wonderful little things, information or information only, that explains why policies are being recommended that we follow them. Also, if you call and talk to Mr. Alexander or Mr. Vanhust, chances are, they've already talked to the attorneys, they will share any information that we have. And I know a lot of people want to get the information firsthand, but these are the guys that, I mean, this is what they do, they give us this information. It comes one time, we pay one cost. Another way that you can do this is if you have an attorney, for instance, there've been a couple of times that I've asked Mr. Vanhust, you know, next time you're speaking with Mr. Shields, would you ask him this question? He relays the information, he sends me back something in a memo form, and I pass out to all the board members. It's in your board packet, you have all the information I have, and we're getting their legal opinion. I'm enjoying the yard work going on out there. And lastly, you mentioned have an attorney present. There are times, I agree, there have been times it would be nice to have an attorney. I asked Mr. Vanhust if he would talk to Mr. Shields, and, and this is something that is on your newspapers that were given to us. We just got this today, I just asked Mr. Vanhust to do this. Actually, Mr. Shields or Ms. Owen would be available to be Skyped into any meetings. We can have them with a conference call. So we do have, they would make themselves available if we knew we were going to have a particularly difficult meeting, we would have them available to offer us assistance. But I can't imagine how many questions we would ask in a month that we could justify paying that kind of money when we are always trying to be so careful with where our money goes. That's just my opinion and kind of where we've been in the past with that.
Now, we had an opportunity to hire a Kingsport lawyer that's very, very good. And he was only going to charge as the Shields.
But I believe, didn't we pay him when he left Kingsport? I know that our first board attorney, I believe that we had paid, and I don't know for sure, maybe I shouldn't say that.
Yeah, a lot of attorneys work that way. They just.
When I seconded this motion, I was wanting to hear the arguments because I knew that you'd shared with us some problems in the past. As I listen, some of the things, some of the points you make, I'd like to address. First of all, the, you know, when they said, when you said that about reading TCA, when I do that, I can understand some of it, but it's a lot like me asking a patient to read the medical book and diagnose themselves, while they really do that a lot, and they're often accurate, to be honest. It's not always best practice. And like Rita said, you know, getting an ophthalmologist to look at it for an eye is a little better than maybe having a gynecologist look at your eye. At least, that's the way, well, I mean, they, they do that, don't they?
Oh, sorry. That's the best thing I've heard all day.
They ask me about pink eye. Well, they ask me about pink eye all the time. So, anyway, but, but I understand what you're saying, and I think there's some validity to wanting to individually find out things. But then as I think about our role as a board, we ask teachers and others to dispose of equipment, they have to ask us. And when we make any purchases, we have to make an approval for that. I think that there's a dangerous slope here where you could have a blank check, if you will, to ask individual questions, because we really are not, when I step off this platform and the gavel goes down, I'm just a parent or a citizen, I'm not a board member. I'm a, not a part of a corporate body, so spending money of the schools is not my prerogative. But if you had a question and it came through this board, I think we have to have a process if we have a local attorney or if we have an outside attorney, by which we ask questions that we agree are worthy of going to that point. What I sense is that underneath the surface of that is probably a concern that there may be distrust in the way it's relayed to you, that hearing it firsthand may be important. And so perhaps that may be the issue we have to deal with, is a way that we can corporately ask a question. When you mentioned, I was wondering too, how do you get them here because of Memphis? But I do think they're very good specialists, and I think that thus far, they've not, I've not been unhappy with anything that we've had. For my individual needs, as questions come up, I was told that TSBA is, includes three attorneys that are part of our service and part of our dues that we pay to TSBA. So me personally, I've utilized the TSBA attorneys, and if I had a question that rose to the level of significance, that I thought that it needed to go through the school system, I've either forwarded it to you or to Mr. Alexander, feeling as if that the purchasing of that was more appropriately done through an administrative route, a channel. But we, we may actually need a channel by which the board actually approves any individual member's request such that that channel, then we know what we're approving to be paid $195 an hour for. That's, I guess, my issue, is the control and the accountability of the expenditure of funds has to be something that we can control. So for that reason, I don't wish to spend schools' money calling and asking a question that maybe Mr. Isaacs got answered last week to his, you know, benefit, or vice versa, any of us, but just picking on somebody. That's my, that's kind of my thing, is I think we need to approve the information requests as a board, just like we do approving the purchase of a computer or, or anything else. When we go to these meetings, you know, we had to approve the distribution of funds, and, you know, I, I had an emergency last time, so I was able to make the Summer Law Institute. And so, you know, I, I didn't want the school to be held accountable for that, there's a $135 fee, so I reimbursed the school. But we had to ask, is it okay for the school to reimburse if I didn't wish to do that? I'd have to ask the school to, you know, reimburse me for that, but I, I didn't want, I'd rather the school not be out that. And I feel that way about systematically, about all the things that we do. So when it comes to an attorney having personal and direct individual access, it seems to be a potential for abuse, so.
Ms. Johnson, she, oh, go ahead.
One, one of the meetings that I attended in Nashville, which we go to every year, I think it's in November, and they said anytime that anyone talked to an attorney, a letter should be written to where each person on the board is informed as to what has been asked and how it was answered. So in other words, nobody's left asking of the exact question in depth nor to the answer. And of course, we haven't had that. And I talked to Mr. Shields about that while I was at the meeting, he said, yeah, but I haven't received a letter. I do see where we pay him, and I see the length of time.
Okay, that's a good question. Are you talking about us, any contact we have with an attorney, you'd like to have a letter to that?
Well, no, no. But since we're paying him, then he should contact, if, if, whether it's major or not, all of us should be informed.
Right.
Yeah, it could be part of our board packet. You know, we could just have a summary of the legal dealings. If he sent a letter, then he sends a letter and.
We send that to the board members.
It could be part of our packet and that additional information.
That was my question.
I, the only thing I would say, every now and then, we have to ask questions of a nature that can't be public, open records, documents, and, you know, maybe we have a, I guess we could ask, the question could be, but my, my concern is if you had individual names and circumstances that could become identifiable for a, an individual. I'm asking Mr. Alexander, I guess.
For clarification, are we talking about if a board member has a question and we contact Mr. Shields and, and get a response, then that's wonderful, where I can respond.
Yeah, we should do that.
But are we talking about every time we as administrators.
Yeah, that was my question.
Contact, no man. That's, Lord, that would be impossible, I mean, it would not be impossible, but it, it would be arduous.
Well, and with that is what Dr. May was saying, there are times that we don't need to know every contact they're having because a lot of it is the day-to-day running of the schools, it is personnel issues, it is our students, and I don't want that information because it's confidential and not always is information that's supposed to be kept confidential, kept confidential, and that puts us in danger of a lawsuit. If it is, this is about our agenda, then they'll share that information. If it isn't about the day-to-day running of the schools, I, I don't want that. I don't want to be responsible for that information. I'm not sure.
I'm thinking of the things that are federally protected, like FERPA. You know, the stuff under FERPA, I don't know that we could.
No.
Have that. But the other things we could have, I mean.
But Mr. Shields' invoice that we receive from their firm every month, which is included in your packet, we've been doing that. Mrs. Armstrong requested Mrs. Wilson to include that with your financials, and we have every month that they've been employed. It lists on there the date that we made the contact, the attorney that worked on the case, and it gives a synopsis of what was discussed with the charge per time. He's being pretty open about everything that we've done to justify why we're, he's requesting the payment.
Sure. And some things, though, will be sensitive, but I think, I would think that the things that we would corporately approve for a board member to send up to the attorneys for an opinion, or the things that we would mention in an open meeting at Skype or something, that, that would be fine. But when you get into things that might expose us to litigation, say we're discussing something as administrator about disciplining an employee, that may become open before you need it to be. I know my, you know, in a, in a medical malpractice thing, the last thing you'd want to do is share your entire case before you even got to the courtroom. And I think that we may have situations of that sensitive nature that would expose the system to costs. So I understand and agree that we should have access to know what we're paying for, but particularly the things that we ask as individuals are something that we function as a corporate board. So if I ask a question, every one of you should be able to hear it from the attorney's perspective, rather than have my summary of it, which might leave out or not have every detail of what they were trying to say. The TSBA ones I've used, you know, they're more general, they can't directly tell us because they don't represent us, but they can give us a lot of guideline on how to interpret the TCA laws, you know, the, the law books. But beyond that, if it got very specific, we'd have to approve an expenditure, I think, to get a attorney, but not an individual, you know.
One of the things I know whenever I call Mr. Bennett and I'm asking him a question, I always call him, we talk, and then he always tells me the same thing, send me this in an email question. Send him that as an email question, he responds, I put it in your board packet, anything that I ask, I do. I have only asked Mr. I have only asked Mr. Shields for a couple of things. I asked him about if they could be a part of our meeting, and in May, I asked about, I think it was May, it may have been March or April, we were having a lot of questions about our role as board members when it came to personnel. Again, I asked that he give us a memo, it was in everyone's board packet, I keep it with me. Anytime that, that's what, one of the reasons why, rather than myself calling, I'll just say, "Would you relay this question?" They send it in a memo, you get the same thing that I get, and I try to do that. Any time that I speak to any attorney, I do it in an email form, and I share it. So, you guys have my, you have access to my information. The only time that that hasn't happened was when we were in Greenville. Again, I didn't know that the two of you were going to be at our meeting, we hadn't had any correspondence, and so the three of us were in Greenville. We had a chance to talk to Mr. Bennett, and we did. Otherwise, we would have done that in the normal way of the email, so.
Come on. And I have, I've been listening to everybody here, and everybody's got some very valid concerns and comments, and, and I appreciate that, and the folks from Memphis, I've not met them, been on the board now for several months, I guess I could have went to the law seminar there, not so much, or the cattle bar, which I couldn't attend, but I've not met these folks, and, and I'm sure as far as educational law, they're probably as good as we can get as, as a source. But there can, too, also, I listen to some of the folks, too, is, is the boards that I've been associated with, there's always a legal counsel present at the meetings, and, and there's times that we've had some issues here, that it would have been very helpful to have someone sitting down there to guide us and direct us on how we should vote on parliamentary issues. First meeting I come to, we kind of botched the chairmanship. Real embarrassing if it had legal counsel sitting down there, they could have guided us and directed us, saying, you know, "This is the way you need to do this." So, for that reason, and to the, the folks in Memphis, the only concern there I have, and I'm like Mr. Armstrong, I want to keep them on board. They're of great value because of their experience and their knowledge, but, you know, a local presence in, in some of our meetings would be a little comforting, because they can hear and see and listen and know what's actually going on, instead of having to call the next day and say, "Well, this issue came up, how should we have handled it?" You know, the issues with the bidding of some of our purchases. We're sitting here kind of stumbling around, what did we make the bid process? Hopefully, if, if legal counsel is sitting down here, they could guide us and say, "Yeah, you have," or "Maybe you need to go back and rethink this."
Can I say something to that? I've been on, the entire time I've been on the board, we've never had an attorney here, other than a couple of times we brought in Trotten the Vault. Never had an attorney here, ever. Even when he was our lawyer, he was only here when we thought it was going to be a difficult thing. As far as the bids, that's what they do for us. Mr. Trent, and, you know, he, he does, he looks at all that, the attorneys look at our bids, they do all this for us. It's not so much that you're responsible, they do, you know, they really come and give us this information. Something else that you were talking about, and I just lost my train of thought. As far as...
Parliamentary procedures?
Thank you. One of the things with that is when members of, I know what I want to say now, sorry, had a, had a little moment there. If we all shared our information ahead of time, and we really tried to work cooperatively, that everybody knew what every, you know, it's kind of like, I knew what everybody wanted to talk about, so I'm prepared, we wouldn't have that problem. It's when we get these little landmines thrown at us every once in a while, that somebody might say, "Well, I don't think we're doing that correctly." The minute you ever feel that we're not doing something correctly, don't wait to a board meeting to bring that up, call somebody. Call Mr. Alexander, call Mr. Van Huster, call Ms. Perkins. We'll, we can find out for you, and that never has to be brought up in a board meeting. It's just one of those things where if we, kind of, it's a pre, getting ready for the meeting, it's working cooperatively with each other, we're all on the same, we're a team, and sometimes I don't think we remember that we're a team, and that would be great if, if we could do that. Mr. Alexander is our team captain, and we work through him. He is the only employee that we are tasked to work with, and if we choose not to do that, well, we're not as effective. But that's kind of one of those areas, and you're right, there's nothing worse than sitting here and going, "I don't know what to do." I have hated that feeling over the years. That's one of those things where if you ever, you know, if you're sitting there, you had questions about the bid process, you know, you can always call Mr. Trent ahead of time, you can just say, "Mr. Van Huster, would you have the attorney to check at this? I'm a little uncomfortable with it." He'll call you before the meeting ever starts, and you would already have that information. So, and I understand on some, you know, and a lot of boards, it is nice to have that, but we're such an odd thing. School law is so specialized that most local attorneys aren't really able to answer those questions for us. That's why we went with these guys, they're specialists, because most of local attorneys call them for their opinions. They can do some, you know, basic parliamentary things, but, you know, Dr. May's pretty good at knowing parliamentary procedure, and Ms. Perkins is wonderful at it. I just, it's that matter of keeping someone a retainer who would be great for some general things, but our, what we do is so specialized as an appointed official, you know, you know we go to city council, and they have to talk about everything, and we're just so focused on one thing, which is the school system. And that's just why we went with these attorneys originally, is because they were specialists, and they're the, you know, they're the leaders in this field, and I, I've always felt we were fortunate to have basically the best for our school system.
And I think, I, I agree with you, they bring great value to us as far as their knowledge and expertise. I would like to table this motion and possibly maybe talk with Mr. Shields and the group in Memphis to see if there is a possibility of them having a local tie or somebody, I'm not saying put a local person on retainer or anything, because we got to keep our expenses down, we need to look out, you know, because these guys, you know, can end up being a little bit expensive from time to time. But it, I would like to talk to them to see if there's a way that they maybe could work in conjunction with a local attorney that could be present at our meetings, so that, you know, if we do have issues. Sometimes, you know, it'd be great, and if issues do, do come up bidding, I talked to Mr. Trent today about, you know, the boiler to make sure that we were composed with the emergency issues, and we are, and I understand that. But, you know, sometimes some things come up in the meetings, you know, that we're kind of unsure of, and it would be nice to have a local presence, you know? And I'd, I'd like to table this and discuss this a little further to see what added expense we'd be looking at, and I would want, if we were to go with an extra person, them to work with the folks that we already have, you know, because we have a contract with them, and, and I want to honor that, because I think they bring great value to us, and their knowledge and experience, you know, it's invaluable to us. But I would like to see if there's some way that we could maybe work together with them and maybe have some more local to kind of help us with some. I know the guys at TSB are great, but they kind of give us generic answers, as, as the way that educational law is, but, I mean, when it really comes to the real answers we need to get from our attorneys, because they would be the ones ultimately representing us if we had an issue. So, I don't know if that's a reasonable motion to table this and let us do a little research and talk with our attorneys.
Parliamentary-wise, that, that rises to the highest level, however, so that's now the, if you get a second for that, the thing is, table is just to the end of this meeting. We can postpone till the next meeting, that's a little lower-level motion, but I just pulled up my Roberts.
That's fine, however.
If you want to word it as postpone to the next meeting and get a second, then that would supersede the discussion, if I understand that right.
Okay, I'd like to change that motion and postpone this until we can maybe possibly gather some information, maybe Mr. Van Huster can discuss with our folks in Memphis and see if there's some kind of arrangement maybe we could all agree upon that would be cost-effective for the board moving forward, so we don't incur some expenses that we don't need to.
Is that correct?
Just one, you're correct on the way the motion would have to go, yes, sir. One thing I would, I wanted to make sort of a clarification for, and Mr. Alexander and Mrs. Armstrong have both been coming to board meetings here much longer than I have. In the 10 years that I've been in this position, we have had one attorney who regularly attended meetings for us, and he never addressed a parliamentary question in all the time that he was employed. He was asked other questions, but he was never asked a parliamentary question.
If I may ask a question, I know that we are very comfortable as administration with Mrs. Owen and Mr. Shields, and even, I think Mr. Hudson's was vouch for this, Mrs. Owen came to give us a law update, and the only expense was her housing, and she came from Memphis. And so, I mean, and there was not a question that was not answered either immediately in that room or afterward. But what, as, as a superintendent, what do we do if Shields and Yager and others disagree with the local attorney? What do we do then if there's a conflict in their opinions?
That's a valid...
That scares me, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying...
No, no, I think, you know, but I'd just like that I'll possibly postpone this to let us talk about this a little bit, maybe gather some more information. That's a good valid point there, I agree with that.
I think one other thing that you might want to consider if you're going forth in discussion with whomever, having worked for attorneys before, I think that there's going to be a fine line where they would take on, that firm would have to really think about when they decided to take on somebody else who wasn't on site in their firm to be representing their firm here for us. That's, that's not always something that's done.
That's something we need to explore and see what the...
Would you, would you feel comfortable with trying a Skype with them?
Well, that's something we need to discuss with them. I mean, I know that it's, it's in here.
That's something that...
That might be an answer, and then...
I think Ms. Perkins is parliamentary expert, I, I view her as a parliamentarian, but I raise questions of it sometimes, because I want to make sure that we follow them, since that's our legislative, you know, requirements. But having said that, there are times where I think we sometimes have to get the book out, and it'd be nice to know, I don't know that all attorneys are equally prepared for parliamentary questions. I think a lot of the attorneys are prepared for arguing before a judge, or their expertise is in business, law, or wills in estates, and so the thing I've always liked about this is that they actually are experts in, you know, that, that particular field, and that we've had no problems, that I know of, with this group of attorneys. But I feel a lot more comfortable once I know that we can plug them in and get them on the phone, and we have the technology to do so, though we may want to have it where it's a good way for us, maybe have the Skype, the screen on, on the wall. We do that a lot in my, in my work, where we Skype in doctors from other meetings, and there's hardly any lag, it's, it works pretty good.
Again, I think you would, that, as indicated in the email Ms. Bruce shared with you, that's something they would be willing to do, but I think the board would have to look forward in thinking, is this something that we're going to commit them to every month?
Yeah, I'm worried about the cost involved with the month-to-month having any attorney here, whether they be from outside or, or not, but there are certain meetings, I would like to have one available or on, on the line, or in some way where I could use that expertise, rather than have us, there, there've been a few times where we couldn't be certain that we agreed on how the, how to interpret a law, and it certainly wasn't our expertise to do so, but we had to, we were forced into that situation, where we viewed it differently.
I guess I was in hopes that maybe the, financially, Memphis is as far away from more of Tennessee as you could possibly get.
Yeah.
Maybe Johnson County possibly, but I was just hoping that maybe their firm might have a local connection or know where men actually be retained and pay their children, and then pay them to come to our meetings, I guess, is maybe an option. You know, you never know, you ask.
Oh, no, I think it wouldn't hurt to maybe send a letter to the local attorney, see if they're even interested, they may not be, but I know of local attorneys that I feel are much more knowledgeable than what we're doing now.
That would be a legal question that, I don't sure that you can put this out for bid, Ms. Armstrong, which is what you've done in the past, to seek that, unless you break the contract that you have currently. That would be a question that you'd have to ask first.
Well, we could.
We're not really putting it out to bid, I think she...
If you are seeking to secure the legal services of another firm outside the one that you have, then we're going to have to formally bid that out.
Well, as he stated, he wanted to table this and do some research to see whether or not they would consider, and maybe that'd give all of us time to do a little more research.
So, are you seconding Mr. Isaac's motion to postpone until the next meeting?
Well, we still have a motion on the floor, that's what I was told, that we couldn't put another motion in.
A motion to postpone is a subsidiary motion to the motion on the floor. And so, it can be made, but a motion of another topic can't be. So, a motion to postpone takes precedent, and the only thing that, ahead of that, I think is lay on the table, which is to wait till the end of the meeting to address it. It's not really till the next meeting. And then there's one higher level, which is to fix the time for the meeting to end, and I think that's our highest-level subsidiary motion, which is to fix the time for the meeting to end, and that one actually, believe it or not, has the highest precedence, so.
So, basically, right now, we need to know if we have a second to postpone this item to the next meeting. So, is there a second to postpone Agenda Item Number Eight?
I'm okay to postpone it till discussion, so he can do his research. We want to make the right decision, so. Give everybody some time to go through that. I would like to, in, in part of this discussion, make, I'm trying to figure out how to craft this motion, because I want to continue the discussion on, I, I think that when we pose a question as a board member, we need to set a precedent for how we're going to do that, regardless of whether it be local or outside. So, I guess my motion is that we would bring our requests through either administrator, one of, either the administrator or the assistant administrator, or our board chair, and then they would be presented to the group, to the board for voting, do we go or don't we go with this, do we expend the money or not? So, my motion is that we have a process by which we have individual questions, and it comes through the body and is voted up or down for asking questions, where we're going to be expending school funds to do so.
When, when they come up here to visit for workshop or whatever, I never know when they're going to be here. Nobody ever tells me.
It's in your board packet. And same with Mr. Alexander, isn't it always in with the...
Ahead of the workshop, not after.
No, it's always ahead, he always lets us know.
There's a bottom addendum that says what's ahead, the next week.
And I did miss that opportunity here a couple of weeks ago. I did go back...
You knew, you knew we were having...
Yeah, yeah, I knew, I, I missed the opportunity to meet the folks, you know, that put a face with the name, and that was my oversight, but it was there.
Now, Ms. Owen's, well, here, this past two or three weeks, what was her workshop about?
School law was the primary aspect of that, and she responded to questions. Update of current legislative action in action.
It was not on how to terminate a teacher?
Lord, no.
That's why?
From whom, ma'am?
Did the anonymous letter that was...
Oh.
I'm sorry, that was, from whom did it come?
I didn't get one.
I didn't either, but I don't read anonymous letters, so if he might send me one, you don't sign your name, I don't read them, just so you know.
Well, maybe I overlooked it, but I didn't see it in our, like, board...
The weekly updates are a little...
That's the weekly update that you get from Mr. Alexander, that he tells you what's coming.
Right, you knew that. Well, evidently, I overlooked it, because I would have liked to know.
Okay, that's what he sends you email-wise, I don't include his...
I have trouble with emails.
I guess the motion on the floor is to postpone, we have a second, and I guess we just need to...
What is the motion right now? Right now, what they want to say, to postpone this...
Do some research, more research.
Okay, so, I'm on the floor, is to postpone Agenda Item Number Eight until the next meeting. Is that okay, as worded, Mrs. Perkins? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Next item is approval to review capital projects and priority, in parentheses, needs assessment, and workshop. Ms. Armstrong.
On that one, I'm going to ask that it be placed on the September agenda because of time tonight, and first, first item, please. Thank you. I've never been first. I want to be first.
Any questions? Everybody okay with that?
Is that okay with anybody?
So, we're good to go on that one? Next is on your agenda changes, we have two more. Item is to approve additional kindergarten teacher position at East Side Elementary School and West Side Elementary School. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. It's in your additional information.
Mr. Van Huster, come forward, please.
I think you have at your seat a copy of the enrollment numbers at each location. These are total students per grade level, and as you can see, it has the cluster average and the class size average, of which defines if a school is quote-unquote overcrowded. and the class size average, of which defines if a school is quote-unquote overcrowded. And as long as you meet these requirements, there's no school that's designated as overcrowded. And as you can see here, that's certainly not the case. Obviously, if we were overcrowded, we'd be fined by the State Department. So again, as we've done in the past, enrollment enhancement has been a huge part of our push for our system, and this is in line with that. And I think we all know the benefits to our existing students, as well as, you know, financially for our system, the students that we've been able to add over the last few years. Dr. Wondell, Mr. Rock are prepared. Any questions you have about the building, location? Yes, there's room. So if there's any questions about that.
Do they have any questions?
I'm assuming we do have classrooms for these additional teachers. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you? I'm on the floor, is to approve additional kindergarten teacher position at Eastside Elementary School and Westside Elementary School. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Final is approve the 63-month lease agreement for the Hasler Model IM440 digital mailing system from Advanced Mailing Systems for a monthly payment, $106.59. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mrs. Wilson, do you want to respond to that, please?
Our current mailing system lease ends this month, and we contacted the company through which we have the current lease, plus two other companies. And currently, the lease is expiring. The payment is $433 per quarter. So this price is even less than what we're paying now. And this company has been very good to work with. They are very reliable when it comes to service and anything that we need.
Do they have any questions? I'm on the floor, is to approve the 63-month lease agreement for the Hasler Model IM440 digital mailing system from Advanced Mailing Systems for a monthly payment of $106.59. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. One thing before we leave. September 23rd, which is a Monday night, the Fall Regional TSBA Meeting is going to be held at Elizabethan High School. Need to know tonight, before you leave, if you're planning on attending. For Dr. May, Mr. Isaac, it's a very nice dinner. And for us, we need to show off our students. Everybody's going to be in our building, and it's a wonderful thing. I really encourage everyone to come, but please let Mrs. Perkins know because it would be terrible if the host school doesn't have anybody there. So please let her know, and we want to make the reservations for that. It's really great. Our school, I'm sure our students, or somebody's going to be singing. We're going to have a little surprise.
At this point, Randall Bennett is going to be singing, we understand, with Ms. Debbie Goode in one endeavor there. That ought to be interesting. But anyway, I'm sure that it'll be a whole lot easier to find this location than doing the war last year, as we were lost up in Church Hill somewhere.
We were not the only ones that lost because we kept finding everybody else turning around because they followed the same GPS that we did, and it took us to a cul-de-sac, and we did not see the school there. So it was a lot of fun. All right, just take care of that before we leave. Again, don't forget, we have the brace for Wondell. Mr. Hutchins, yes?
I just wanted to make mention that we have a distinguished guest this evening. Josh's brother, Neil Wondell, is here. He's a member of the United States Air Force. He's one of our own, and he's getting ready to leave for Korea September the 12th, and I think we need to thank him for his service.
I remember watching you play football with my nephew. I have fond memories of, I yelled for you often. I'm going to continue to yell for you in my head now. Best of luck. We wish you well. Can I get a motion to approve because the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, September 19th, which is my little sister's birthday, 6:30 in this boardroom. Can I get a motion to adjourn? I'm Miss Kim Burchman. Thank you.